Hi, I'm Rukhih Rasadi. And I'm here with Franz. And we're self-moderating a District 2 forum, which we invited all the district reps to. And they may show up, they may not, but we have more than an hour's worth of content that we need to consolidate into the next hour. And when I first came in today and I set up, I put up my black cloak over the American flag as a, unfortunately, a very shallowly symbolic example of how we are in crisis as a nation. And we need to do so much more than just cover up those issues with a black piece of cloth. There's going to be a lot of work that's necessary. And I really trust that everyone is dedicated and empathizing with the amount of work that we have ahead of us to create the future we need and deserve now. I am also a write-in candidate for the Select Board. And Franz, you're on the Select Board candidate ballot too. And I felt really betrayed when, during the last Finance Committee meeting, which was very intimate because there were one, two, select board members there and two Finance Committee people and myself as a guest. And I heard the Select Board presentation on pro the 1% sales tax increase and against the proposal. And I gave my input about how much that is going to really hurt the locals in town. And it's going to detour tourist income as well. And still, you were not confident in saying you were against it, which is just kind of like a follower mentality. Just because no one else on the board is saying that they're against it, doesn't mean you're... It doesn't, it's no excuse to make a stand and say, yes, this is very ethically wrong and corrupt and going to cause a lot more gentrification in the area.
Well, I remember that Finance Committee meeting, certainly. And we have heard again from interested parties since then. And I think there's rationality on both sides of the discussion. I don't find that it's a slam dunk one way or the other. And I certainly wouldn't come out and say I was against the proposal because I'm probably more in favor of it than against it at this point.
And this is why we need more young people to be active. And like, I know that young people especially who are not financially secure and need paid jobs and volunteering is really a privilege of well-paid people who have extra time and aren't just trying to survive. And that's why I feel so... It's not even just the feel. I am so alone as a minority here because people are struggling too much, too participate, too empower themselves, to uplift themselves.
Well, I'm not sure how to answer that directly. I think you can make an argument that it would be better to pay more money for the people who do the work for the town, like the Select Board, like the school board members.
And the committees, and the district reps. All the positions because then we will get the best qualified. The money can come from a... What I like to call a matrix currency, where as part of seceding from the federal government banks, we can create our own codes with all of the currency systems we already have, like debit cards. I used to be calling it a credit currency, but I think that gives the wrong impression that there would be a credit interest. And I'm not particularly in favor of taking money away from people. That's why I'm against the sales tax. I'm into paying them more so they can afford more, not be as dependent on the government and as dependent on charity. Because charity is not empowering people.
Well, the part of that that I guess I can make a comment on is that I think it's very doubtful that we're going to create our own money here in the...
You're doubtful.
Well, I think objectively, it's an unlikely outcome in the near term.
When you say it, you are projecting out onto other people. And I want you to speak for yourself because it's an illusion when people, when reps say that they speak for anyone else but themselves. You're speaking from your experience. You cannot put your words on other people's mouths.
I'm not putting any words in anybody's mouth. I'm saying what I think is likely to happen.
You doubt that. And that's not helping anyone. How is that helpful? How is that progressive?
How is what helpful?
How is your doubt helpful and progressive towards us being empowered with our own money so we don't have to lobby towards a fascist government that is killing us daily? There is a democide going on. We are living in a real crisis.
I'm not saying what I think should happen.
Well, why do you say what you think should happen?
What should happen?
Yes.
When and where?
You say. Speak your own lines. I'll be guiding you.
Okay. I think that it would be of significant benefit if more people got involved in helping make the decisions that affect our communities. And I think that's true at the local level. I think it's true at every level at which, at which we could define a community. And, you know, one of my reasons for being here today is to try to, you know, spread the word that there are important things being considered, like the sales tax.
Which we shouldn't even be considering because it's taking up, it's a waste of time. We need to be focusing on things that are empowering us and that should be tabled for at least five to 10 years. Stableism, you are not even mentioning it.
When you say "we" shouldn't be doing this, who are you speaking for?
Anyone who agrees with me. I'm not speaking for them, I'm speaking with them.
Well, I think there are other people who feel different.
Yeah, I bet that those are property owners earning over $55,000. They don't want to pay more property taxes on land that was stolen from native and indigenous people.
It seems like you're excluding a lot of people from the conversation.
I invited, I invited everyone I could to come.
Oh, no, 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 I don't mean...
I invited everyone for input. And what do I hear? I hear people blocking me and thinking that I'm scam because I'm talking about issues that they don't understand. And they want to prefer to be ignorant about and keep their head in a hole and ignore the chaos going on.
Okay.
You asked me how we're going to pay for that. And then you said you're doubtful. Do you want to explain why you're doubtful about us having our own currency?
I think having our own currency in this town would be difficult for many reasons.
Just because something is difficult does not mean it is not worthy of investing time and effort in and what the benefits would be.
And because it would be difficult, I think most people would decide, no, that's not what we want to have happen.
They don't have to work on that then. We need the best. We need to pay the best. The most qualified people. The most optimistic people who believe in what they're doing.
I think it's a reasonable proposal. I think you'd have to put in, you know, in writing, here's what it would look like, here's what it would cost, and then recruit people to support it.
See, what it would cost in U.S. dollars is up to interpretation. That's really hard for me to fathom. I don't come from a background in economics, but I have written a plan of what it could look like in all of this. My thoughts on something you're concerned about, I'll try to find data and tab it.
Okay. Well, let's see. We could certainly talk about the proposal to spend some tax money on marketing the town.
I was so painful to watch the Select Board talk about.
So what?
For Shanta, she just had no real support up here from people understanding how we needed an ethnic, ethical review board. And also, I did really appreciate what Liz Middlachlan said about how the DVA, the Darn Don Brodera Alliance, and the Chamber already are receiving funds to market, and they don't need more. And it's like the best promotion is from word of mouth, from people and events here. And also, how the Arts Committee was saying that best promotion is arts. And we were only putting $8,000 a year into the arts? That's like, that's poverty. That's impoverishing the arts. That just shows no one on the Select Board actually really cared about the arts.
Do you have a proposal for supporting the arts in town?
To get so much more money. Like, if, I don't know how much money. I know the town is in a surplus. We're not in debt, which we should be because we're in an economic depression. So the more we invest into public services and public works, the better everyone is, everyone is going to be. And so, let's go into a debt, investing into the arts. And how about the, this is a tangent, all the things we could spend money on, contracting with Tesla, with the Boring Company for sustainable and free mass public transportation.
So you're thinking of the device that Tesla's come up with for like drilling an underground tunnel for roadways and things?
He's doing it actually like every which way. There's above grounds, buses, there's underground tunnels, the private cars, we use those for taxis.
I thought the Boring Company was specifically for the tunnel stuff. Is that right?
I would be pro either way, that makes sense. If he wants to redo the trains, redo the trains. Because like, oh my God, the train station. Have you overused the train station?
Here in Rattleboro?
Yeah.
Yes?
It's so lackluster. And so does the bus station. Like, I take the bus sometimes because I don't have a car. And the bus drivers and the riders were all complaining that although the Select Board approved over $200,000 to renovate the parking garage, that none of that money is being spent on making the bathrooms functional. Because like, usually the bathrooms and the sinks and toilets, they don't work. And they're not gender neutral.
Well, I would support their working and I would support their being gender neutral.
Yeah, the money was spent on more lighting so that people who think that lighting will deter people who are homeless from occupying that area. It's just, I can't shake my head enough at how wrong that is, what a waste of money that is. What do you got on your mind, Franz?
Well, I was wondering if you were having any luck finding the proposal in your collection?
Yeah. I'm trying to think about how I want to frame it, though. I have been on LinkedIn networking with about, I'm not sure, almost about 1,300 professionals now in software engineering and software architectural design. We specialize in finances and are a part of enforcing diversity, ethnic diversity in organizations. And I am going to be hosting a web conference with them eventually. I wanted to be doing it sooner, but I've gotten really caught up with Supreme Court cases and my health. But I want to get their feedback on how to code a matrix that would provide basic income for people. It would ensure there being the funding for... And like, these, I don't believe in political promises, but these are a reiteration of ideas that can be shared with people who want to realize making them, that we can make the funding for all of the healthcare needs for people, including service animals, which Medicaid and Medicare don't cover at all now. And for trans care too. We can fund survivor reparations. We can ensure food security. And there's an idea of the youth and elder escrow, where as people age, kind of like how there is social security income now where people get monthly payments, there can be yearly payments as you get older so that people can learn how to invest in the projects they care about. And so, that would be able to give like a really large sum for their retirement as well, and have that retirement security.
Well, I was specifically wondering about the proposal to pay all the town reps and committee members and stuff. Did you have a specific proposal for that?
I think we could use the matrix for that.
Tell me more about the matrix again.
Like, how people are using debit cards now. We can, for all residents in Rattleboro, whether they're homeless or not, give them an account and start paying them. It's just numbers, it's just code.
What would they use that account for?
Everything. They can, and it would be in equal exchange to the U.S. dollar to simplify things too. They could use it online for shopping or anything. They could use it in stores, use it for food.
Well, but once you say go to the grocery store, it's no longer just code. It's code that's being exchanged for something tangible.
Yes.
So where does that tangible thing come from? And how is it...
It's really just code. Like, when you say tangible, you're talking about silver, gold, green, pieces of paper from trees?
No, I was talking, I was talking about food. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah. And so like, when people have U.S. dollars on their account, they're just trading that code of currency for tangible items. We could do that.
So would there be any limits on what people could spend from the matrix?
What defines limits?
A boundary, a top number, a restriction on...
I truly support people who can be so successful without exploiting other people to make millions and billions of dollars. That's awesome if people can be so successful. Like, I don't want to take money away from people. And so, when you say to create a limit, that's... Why bother?
Well, I mean, supposing I decided today I wanted to buy something.
Okay, okay, I got a good limit example. No nuclear bombs.
All right. But suppose I wanted to buy a car.
Great.
So if I went to buy a car, I would, you know, as it is now, I would have to have some money in some account or take out a loan or something.
Yeah.
It sounds like under your matrix, I would just be able to go there and say, take the money out of the matrix.
Go get a car, dear.
What if I want another car tomorrow? That's what...
That's your prerogative. That's your money. You decide what you want and you need.
But how does, how does the money go into my account?
The money, I could start off with the aging escrow, youth and elder, and also from, if you are employed, and also from basic income. Your employer can pay you into this matrix, and the basic income would be from a case manager, like that there is the Economic Services Department through the state already. You have a case manager. They can set you up and start getting your basic income. They have that security.
How is that different from our current system?
The current system has no basic income provision for everyone, which creates a constant state of crisis and people being exploited.
So you'd be advocating sort of for a guaranteed income for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have an idea how much that would be?
I think we could start off at $35,000 a year because that's still like lower... It's like the most wealthy poor people. You're still going to be in poverty at $35,000. But goddamn, like, I've been on SSDI since I was 17. That's almost 10 years, that's nine years. And that's been limited to about $11,000 a year. And that is a struggle to live on. Oh my God. That is recreating so much disease and crippling conditions for me. And that's just me, but everyone who is dependent on SSDI, who is not employable or is not, is not working.
Well, you know, I'm hearing a really serious issue there of what kind of support the community as a whole or society as a whole should be responsible for people who have some kind of disability, let's say.
Basic income would be for everyone, not just people with disabilities.
So...
People with disabilities should be getting the basic income and a disability income because they have to be paying so much more to take care of their disabling conditions and to enable themselves in all of the ways that society disables them and doesn't accommodate them.
Well, I guess once again, you know, we come down to the question of how are we going to pay for it?
I know that we're in a surplus now. And however much we can put into, put into it, we're going to benefit endlessly from. Like, do you know how much we're in surplus right now?
You mean in the town budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think for fiscal year '19, the surplus is likely to be something like $200,000 or $300,000.
Right, like, I don't have a budget of how much of... The thing is, like, what, this conference that I'm going to be holding is going to be put out, be putting out a bid to contractors to see how much they want for setting this up, which we could have locals doing it, absolutely. I would prefer locals doing it, but I'm on the Vermont Technology LinkedIn group and they're not as active as the rest of like the international competition. The competition is fierce. And a lot of other people around the world are excited about this, to empower themselves away from oppressive governments.
When you say they're, they're interested in this...
Matrix system.
So including the guaranteed income?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good luck.
I don't need good luck. And I always tell people that. I need good people, and I know everyone is.
Well, how about good luck finding good people?
No, everyone is good people. That's how I stay sane with that Buddhist foundation and any of the pain and suffering experience. Although it feels real, I also have to balance it being an illusion that I visualize that this pain and suffering is just the petals falling down as blessings that we can transform how we feel about these things. Like, a lot of the roadblocks can become opportunities. Like, I was infuriated earlier today that this meeting wasn't put on the town calendar. And I have no control over that. That's someone else's responsibility. And I really just hurt myself by feeling angry about that, even though the anger is valid. And I don't want to hurt myself or other people.
Well, not hurting people is supportive.
There's a lot of hurt going on right now.
Agreed.
The, especially I think from the liberal media too. Like, this propaganda that they're pushing about how, like, by saying they are pushing, I mean, parenthood, resist fight, and move on. They're trying to persuade people that we should ban any national emergency crisis shutdowns, whereas I was marching against the inauguration in the street, not the sidewalk to stop traffic so that there was recognition that we cannot go on daily functioning anymore because we were trying to really shut down the government. I don't want them to come back. I don't want the government to reopen. I want them to stay shut down and for us to succeed. And they're in the proposal to end the Dylan's rule, Colonel Dylan, colonizer Dylan, that all of these municipalities need to follow the constitutional law that currently the movement to overturn that home rule is being directed by a city and towns league, which have all of these rules about how only so many municipalities can apply under all of this jurisdiction to them. So they're just like another middleman between us, the senators, and the federal government. And we really don't need any of them. There are over 250 municipalities in Vermont alone. The current draft is saying that we're only going to allow 10 municipalities in Vermont to be empowered. And there's no reason for that. We should all have equal opportunity to that.
Well, let me shift my focus a little bit and wonder if there are certain issues that are of concern to the voters about town meeting representatives in general. You know, my experience in the past has been there isn't much discussion by the town representative candidates before the election takes place.
Right.
And, but nonetheless, I'm just wondering, you know, what are the issues that maybe people are concerned with for choosing town meeting representatives?
Well, I need to study more into this that when looking at the demographics of the area and the population census, that the borders have potential for gerrymandering about how many representatives are even allowed per area, per district. And we, I'm not impressed by the current reps' organizational skills to really make an impact and difference with the time we have and the careers that they want to reflect on.
But looking at the specific issues that people are concerned about, are there things that you... I mean, we already sort of talked about one of them, which is whether the town reps and select board etc. should be paid a more significant salary or stipend or something. That was discussed at town meeting a couple of years ago. And the suggestion that we should increase the amount for the Select Board and for the school boards was voted down by the town meeting office. So that is a legitimate issue, I think, for town meeting. And you mentioned the 1% sales tax, which obviously you're strongly against. I'm leaning in favor of at this point. And, but how about anything else that comes to your mind in terms of this election? Things that are going to be maybe on the agenda at town meeting?
Everything I've talked about should be on the agenda.
Well, maybe it should be, but it's not. You know, the agenda has been published and that town meeting is pretty much going to be governed by that. And then most of it is budget stuff. I mean, there's some, you know, housekeeping of, well, who's going to be the town treasurer and who's going to be the town attorney and stuff like that. But a lot of it is related to money that we're proposing to be spent.
How can the agenda be set when the elected haven't even been confirmed yet?
Because the law requires that the...
It's all driven by...
The law requires that the agenda be published in advance by a certain period of time. And that's actually what the Select Board votes on, is to create and publish the agenda for town meeting.
Well, that's just a guide and we can adjust it and be flexible if necessary.
To some extent, yes. But there are limits on that too. I mean, there are legal limits on what we can do at town meeting.
Just because something may be ordained legal doesn't mean that's ethical.
No, it certainly doesn't.
And we should do what we really believe in.
Ethical and legal are different. But I'm, I can say pretty definitely that... town meeting will act in a way that is hopefully ethical, but is, is also legal.
I don't have an agenda to look at in front of me. You're asking me what should be on the agenda, but you're saying that the agenda is already confirmed.
Well, I was actually asking if you had comments of any sort on the agenda.
Well, do you remember off the top of your head what, what else is on the agenda that you want to know my comments about?
Well, um, there's the approval of the overall budget, which includes, of course, many different items. Uh, there's the use of fund balance as to, you know, we do have money saved up and how much of that should we use to pay for things this year, including uh, equipment, capital equipment, like uh, I think a dump truck and other, um, other items that last for a number of years.
Was intervention, was awarding intervention committee approved on that?
I have not heard anything about awarding intervention committee.
You have from me.
From you I have, but I mean, for terms of the agenda, no, I have not heard anything.
That's unfortunate. And have you heard anything about a water quality certification budget approval for anyone else?
Well, to, I think that would come in the utilities budget, which is actually not part of town meeting.
Why?
Because according to state law, the select board alone has jurisdiction over the utilities fund.
I wonder why they didn't, they don't care enough about water certification for people to approve that? Maybe so they're, they're confident and secure that they have drinkable water, whereas my water, I tested and it was over F levels from mercury and phosphate.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that's important information and in fact, the select board and the town manager have said that that will be reviewed in the upcoming uh, sort of longer term planning for the town, like for the next year. I don't think it's gonna be?
By next year, you mean twenty twenty?
Um, no, I really mean starting after town meeting in the, in that.
All right, good, that's a good priority.
So?
Water side.
And I have actually, because of the things that you've sent around, I've actually thought, well, I need to know more about this, so I have done some looking around in terms of water quality issues. Uh, and, and found a thing, a few things that surprised me um, in terms of things that maybe we should be testing for, looking at, so I, I think?
Like estrogen from dairies that are produced in town?
Yes, estrogen is, is definitely one of the things that, that could be talked about, for sure. And uh, I, I, you know, I haven't gotten into all the details of exactly how to test for it and where you would wanna look in the water cycle.
Would you support, cause right now the town is putting all their sewage right into the water, would you support that going into a plant for treatment instead of including the environment?
Our sewage is treated, we, we don't just dump sewage into the river.
Oh, thank you for correcting me, cause I was horrified about that, that's what I heard people say.
No, no, we, we have, we have sewage treatment facility.
Great, at least we're doing that much.
Well, indeed, that would be terrible if we didn't.
Well, I think a lot of places still are, so I, when I wasn't?
Not in the state of Vermont anyway.
All right.
You can't just do that, that's against the law.
Great, I support that.
Yeah, raw sewage going into the waterways is not.
All right, if I find that going on anywhere, I'm gonna contact you and tell you if you ever come.
I will appreciate hearing about it.
I will.
And I will, the, the two of us can go chain ourselves to a tree on the riverbank.
Dude, the first tree we're gonna chain ourselves to is the one by Abiadi Monument. Are you familiar with that tree?
Uh, no.
All right, so on uh, South Main Street, um, there is the gravestone seller and behind that shop and behind a big complex for obviously like very underfunded people is this gorgeous, bodacious, over two hundred year old cucumber magnolia tree that is, they surrounded by cement. And I think we should boycott the gravestone seller and uh, also because if people who have the money for a gravestone, it's just like I'm jealous and envious of them that they even think that they can claim that piece of land for the rest of their lives um, with a gravestone. Uh, but we really need to take some pickaxes and then tear out that pavement around that tree.
So is the tree on the property of?
It's on their private property.
It is.
And that's why the uh, tree board committee won't put it on the uh, list of treasured trees in town and is this the saddest thing, cause they put a dumpster right next to it too.
Mm-hmm.
It could be so much more beautiful, cause like I can see the top of it from where I live and like, I just, I enjoy that tree and I want the best conditions for it.
Sounds like a lovely tree.
Yeah, I really hope people go see it and then like protest and bring a pickaxe.
Well, maybe, maybe we could flip it around a little bit and have people go there specifically to appreciate the tree and then maybe the owners would be motivated to do a little something to, excuse me, my phone is quack.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe the uh, the owners of the tree and the property would be motivated to do something a little more beautifying around it.
I hope so, because they're not listening to me. I can't do this alone, I can't do any of this stuff alone.
Well, that is so true for all of us, we can't do any of it. Everything takes cooperation uh, within the community framework, for sure.
I think we're past our time, didn't we say we're gonna stop at four, we got to until four thirty?
No, we could go longer, but I, I have to say that um, I actually just got a text from work that I should answer and I, and I have some other things to do. So I'd be willing to stop anytime.
Stop anytime, doesn't like you have fifteen more minutes?
Uh, yeah, I'll tell you, how about if we go to four fifteen, that'd be good?
All right.
Okay. All right, well, that would then lead us into sort of a wrap it up time to say.
What do you have to say?
Well, I would like to say kind of what I said at the beginning, which is I hope people will uh, find the motivation to get more involved in town affairs. We've?
If that's just motivation?
Well, I'm hoping they'll find the motivation and?
We have to give them the money to motivate them.
Uh, well, that's, we talked about that a little bit and I'm, I'm still a little skeptical that that's gonna happen. I, I don't?
It's our only hope.
I don't see the necessary support for that and I've got a different.
What is the necessary support?
Necessary support would mean that the voters would have to show up and vote in favor of spending a lot more money on the representative town government that we have.
Yeah, and we can make that more of a fair fight by expanding the uh, what do you wanna call, just accepting more residents to vote, making, making registration more easier for people.
Okay, well, it's, it is pretty easy right now.
People have to have a mailing address and so people who are homeless are either using uh, the Ann March Clinic or the Drop In Center address and neither of those are secure ways for them to actually receive their mail, so like those are in a way like are, it's not good enough for, for people.
Well, there's, there's something to work on, for sure.
I think we should be able to, for people to sign up online and with an app and not have to have a, a mailing address. I think maybe an email address or a phone number suffice, but all of those are still privileges beyond a lot of people's accessibility.
I think it, you know, it raises some issues of uh, verifying that people actually live in the town that they want to vote in. So um, you know, I think looking at that would be a reasonable thing to do, but you should be prepared for hearing other points of view as well.
Always.
There are reasons that it might not, might not be practical or uh, or fair.
Well, do you wanna give any examples of those, cause if you're speaking hypothetically, then why bother?
Uh, I speak in hypotheticals all the time.
Why?
Because that's what our prefrontal cortex enables us to do, to hypothesize and plan and try to imagine.
You're longer, you're, you're, you're saying a hypothetical, Dune's response to this, though, without any concrete examples.
Oh, then, well, what we're talking about doesn't exist, the online app, no address.
But that's progressive, you're being anti-progressive for no reason.
Well, maybe I am, but what I'm saying is?
Do you really wanna be known as devil advocate, the week one?
Here's my point, you're being just as hypothetical as I am.
Progressively.
Okay. So, but that's my, my main point is to get more people involved and to be town reps, to vote, to become educated on what the important issues are. And I'm, I think that will strengthen our community and help us make really good decisions.
Do you know if any, if there's any other write-ins for the select board?
Uh, I haven't heard of any, of course, anybody can say their write-in anytime.
No, they have to go to the town clerk and notify, notify them. Please do. Please.
What, you, you want?
Please.
You want more competition for the position?
Oh, please, please, please.
You heard my companion.
All right, peace y'all.